Welcome, everybody, to the League of Women Voters School Board Candidate Forum. Both to those in the audience tonight and to those on live screen. I'm Cynthia White, Chapter Chair of the Bay Village Chapter. And I want to start out by thanking our voter services team, who has put in a lot of work with this production. Carrie Ekel, Chair, who is even here with a newly broken leg. Joe Morris, Peter Pedo, Andrea Wilson, and Cheryl Winlow, who worked many hours on this. I especially want to thank you, the audience, for coming out, taking the time to become an informed voter, which is one of the most important responsibilities that will see the Senate in democracy. I'd also like to thank the candidates for setting time aside to let the voters get to know you. So, thank you for coming. In keeping with our longstanding forum tradition, questions to the candidate will be submitted in written form. Everyone should have gotten a card as you came in for writing down your questions. When you have a question ready, raise your hand and a runner will come and pick up your card and take it to the question sorting table in the back. Also, raise your hand whenever you would like another question card. We have three League members at the question sorting table in the back, who will be reviewing the questions to avoid repetition, provide a diversity of topics, and assure appropriateness. We are recording the program for future viewing on YouTube, so personal recording during the forum is forbidden by League policy. After the Q and A section is completed, the candidates will go to their campaign tables in the hallway and be available to continue answering questions that we were not able to get to due to the time constraints of the forum. We are fortunate to have as our moderator this evening Pam Smith of the Lakewood League. Pam is an experienced moderator who helped us have a very successful forum for the judge candidates for Rocky River District Courts last week. So, thank you so much for helping us out again, Pam. What is yours?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm so happy to be here and see so many people here interested in the race for school board. There are three candidates for school board for two spots. So, it's very important that you choose carefully. Our process tonight is to have an opening statements from all candidates, and we will conclude with closing statements from all three candidates. And in the middle will be our questions and answers. The opening statements will be two minutes in length. We have timekeepers here in the front row who will time. They will have thirty seconds remaining, fifteen seconds remaining. And then, should you be going on too much, the important stuff. So, in general, I find candidates very, very anxious to finish their opening statement so we can get to questions, because questions are really the meat of a candidate forum, being able to ask questions and learn about candidates, their similarities and their differences, and so on. I will be asking the questions in kind of random order, but all candidates will have an opportunity to answer the questions. I'm going to start now with our opening statement. Deborah Callahan, start, followed by James Goodman and Patrick Mosher. Ms. Callahan?
Good evening. I think every dream pursuit starts with education is the foundation. Forty years ago, my husband and I moved to Bay Village for that reason. We thought the schools were excellent, and we wanted our daughter to start school here. And she did. She finished through grade twelve, and then now she and her husband are raising their three boys here, too. It's a wonderful school system. I taught for thirty-three years in Lakewood, taught math and algebra. I retired from Lakewood City Schools. While I was there, I was Teacher of the Year. I also worked for Cleveland State as a classroom teacher educator. It was very important to me that people that were in the Education Department had a good background in classroom management and instruction. I also wrote curriculum and presented at Greater Council Teachers of Mathematics and also National Council Teachers of Mathematics. In the community here, I have worked on Strategic Planning Committee that we spent last year working on and is being implemented now. I also was Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for a few years, and I've been members of the PTA for many years in various forms of supporting the groups. I remain deeply committed to education, and I believe all students should have access to a high-quality public education. This commitment is why I feel compelled to run for the board. As a member of the board, I would prioritize the implementation of the strategic plan, the continual improvement in communication with everybody in the community. I would be an advocate for public schools through the state, watching what they're doing. I hope to work with the superintendent and the board to always put students first by addressing the whole child. I hope to have the opportunity to support our teachers in a meaningful way as well. Our children deserve the best, and I hope you will consider me for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman?
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for not just this forum, but all of the work that they do, not just in this community, but around our country as a whole. Secondly, thank you to the community here. Community engagement, I've come to learn, is really the backbone of this district. And it's really what makes our district unique. I've spent a lot of time throughout this campaign with the PTA folks, some many, many hours. You know, I commented to them, like, you're here, you're there, you're everywhere. Every time I see you, you're with your family. But it's what makes Bay Village special. I've learned how that ties into just the interconnectedness. You know, we have community engagement, parental involvement. You know, of course, our district is incredible, and we have to preserve and protect it. You know, of course, you know, like myself, my family and I, we moved here because of the school system. We sought out this school system to come here just because of its status. But the community engagement ties not just into families, you know, desiring to move into this community, but teachers as well. We've done a great job recently with, you know, talent acquisition. You know, this is a destination not just for families, but for teachers as well. And it's no wonder that, you know, folks want to move here, teachers and families alike, because of the support of the community, and just what a unique thing it brings to the district. I was in this room recently for the Citizen of the Year Award, and the mayor used the term special sauce, right? Like, we have these great individuals, you know, great community members, great organizations, the Bay Alumni Foundation, Bay Village Education Foundation, the Music Boosters, you know, that support our district, and it's one of the pillars, you know, that we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosher?
I hope I get the alarm, too. Now, I'm going to try to come in well under two minutes. Many of you probably remember me from two years ago. For some reason, I decided to do this again. Actually, it's a good reason. Debbie and James have both said most of those. This is an awesome community. I was born here. My family moved away. But now, I had an opportunity to move back twenty-seven years ago for the schools, for this community. All three of my children graduated from Bay High School. They love it so much. They went to college, and they all came back, and they live here in Bay. And actually, we have dinner with them every night. There isn't enough I can say about this community, about these schools, and about my wife and partner, who was on the school board for eleven years and who showed me what a labor of love this is and how worth it it is for this community. I have the bandwidth to do this. I want to do this. Not because it brings anything to me. We had to answer a question for Westlife. What does the job pay? And I thought, what an odd question. I wrote my answer was, I don't know, and I don't care. I'm not here for glory. I'm not here for money. I'm here because I love these students. I love this community. I love these teachers and staff. And I'm going to do my darndest, working with Scott, these administrators and these teachers, to keep this the best school district that I know. So, thank you, and thanks to the League Women Voters. I appreciate this and everything you all do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, it's very clear we have three candidates who want to do the best and who love Bay Village. But there's a lot of decisions along the way, and so it's helpful to ask a lot of questions. There are two minutes for each answer, should they wish to take the two minutes, or they can take however long, less than that, that they want, and we'll get through questions. We're going to start with Mr. Goodman for the first question. Please describe, and then will all of, everyone will also address their answer to the same question. Please describe the role of a local school board member and share why you are the best person to fill this role.
Yeah. So, first, you know, the school board, right? You know, we set the policy for the district. We hire superintendent, fire if necessary. You know, so... And we also set the culture for the district, right? We try to reflect, you know, the values of the community and our students as well. We try to take, you know, their values and to kind of reflect that back to them. Why am I qualified for this? You know, for one, as I should have noted in my introduction, in my professional life, I work as an IT Contract Analyst at Case Western Reserve University. So, I do contract negotiations for much of my day with the focus on saving money. For one, fiscal responsibility is incredibly important for our district. And secondly, with the focus on information security and data security. And as learning becomes more intertwined with technology, that becomes even more applicable. And going back to the culture, I can't say enough about the students that we have here. I find our students, you know, they're highly educated. They're resilient. They're inspiring, right? If anybody got to attend the production of Newsies at the high school, you know exactly what I'm talking about. These kids are phenomenal. They deserve our support, right? They deserve somebody who is going to energize them. They deserve somebody who's going to support them. And the same thing for our educators, too. Our educators do such a phenomenal job with our children. They're caring, compassionate. I've had nothing but the best experiences with the district and the educators that serve my child personally here at this school. So, I just want to do what I can to support.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher? Mr. Mosher, can you describe the role of a local school member, and why you're the best person to fill it?
Yes, yes, I will. Thank you, Pam. As James said, a school board, the role of a school board member is an interesting one. I think we've learned in recent elections that people don't have the right idea of what we do and don't do. The primary thing that we do is we hire and we put into place the right superintendent treasurer. And I will say this, two years ago, I ran because I was worried about that. I'm not worried about that now. We have an incredible superintendent treasurer. And so, we get to focus on the next things. We get to focus on policy, budget, fiscal responsibility. Those are all things that are very important. We do that every day. My job, where I work, and I don't want to get into that because it's boring, is I work with lawyers in intellectual property, and I am awarded for my critical thinking, how to figure out to solve a problem when you have three data points, so you need ten. How to find patterns when they're not readily apparent to others. We have to find solutions when they're not always staring you in the face. As I always say, it's easy to make the right decision when you have all the data. It's a lot harder when you don't. That's when the rubber hits the road, and that's what I do. With the experience that I've, again, I got to watch my wife for eleven years. I'm friends with or acquaintances with the current and former superintendent, most of the board members the last fifteen years. I've seen this from the inside, when it was ugly, when it was fun. I'm ready to do this for this community, so I ask you to support me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
As a whole, the board is a policymaking body. And like both of the men here said, that we choose the superintendent and the treasurer. But I think there's more to that, too. My role, as I see it, would be to listen to the community. What is the community thinking about? What are they, what's important to them? Bring that to the superintendent, the treasurer, the board, and talk about what they're saying. So, you have to be a good listener, and you have to be, you have to keep confidentiality. If somebody talks to you about something, it's not to be spread around. It's, this is something that's important to whoever it is you're speaking with. So, that's what I look at as the role. Yeah, we'll make the policies. We're very good at knowing the school policies. You have to do all that. But I think once also a decision is made, then you have to follow through with it, and you have to work as a team. It's not, it's more of a consensus. You decide this is the answer, and this is what we're going to go forward with, and you support that. So, that's what I see the role as, that I would bring to that board.
Thank you very much. Starting with Mr. Mosher, since we've talked about the importance of listening, what do you think are the top three issues in this district?
Three issues? I only get to say three. Kidding. Well, there's some obvious ones. School funding continues to be a challenge in Ohio. That's a broken record. We, as the board, have to help the superintendent, the treasurer, and the whole district to navigate that, making contacts, getting funding where we can get it. And honestly, this city has been so generous with the levy last year. Not only did that levy pass, it resoundingly passed when levies were failing all around us. That's how committed the schools, this community is. And the school board has to be committed to fiscally delivering in a responsible way what the voters here gave to us, and we're going to do that. So, that's one. I better hurry if I'm going to get two more. For me, there's several that I would go with. One that resonated with me, and Mr. Preble, since I talked about it, was having a school district or an educational path that was more pragmatic and more focused on opportunities beyond secondary than just college prep. College prep is great, but it's not the end-all, be-all. We need to do more. We have to have better technical literacy like computers, and we have to take a harder look at vocational studies where it makes sense without having a stigma attached to it. That's two. For me, the third one is a bit more personal for me. I wouldn't call it an issue per se, but I'm passionate about communication, written and oral. And it's a skill that the modern technical world with phones and texting and that has hurt. And I would love to see somehow redouble our efforts or double our efforts. I'm not sure what redouble means there, but somehow increase that sort of literacy.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan, what do you think are the top three issues in the district?
I think the first issue for me is the funding in the state. I think we have to be on top of this continually. There's things going on all the time, and we never know. It's kind of midstream where they come up with something, and then we have to midstream, work it in and make it work for our school system with the funding that we have or with the budget that's been in place. That bothers me. I think that's a problem. It's not a Bay Village problem, but it's a problem that affects Bay Village, so that makes it a problem. Another one that I think is something we need to look at is safety in our schools beyond the doors locking and buzzing and guards and that kind of thing, but more of a helping students feel safe all the time, no matter what their likes and dislikes are, and that they feel that they're safe. And that would be in teaching empathy and working that with them. And it's an ongoing problem with kids. They just don't get it at that early age, but if we continue to work with it, I think that we can make big strides. The third one would be to continue to personalize learning for each student. I think we do a good job with that, and we do, we talk about it a lot, and it's in our strategic plan, too, that this is an important issue, too. Everybody doesn't learn the same way or need the same things to learn, but we need to work at making sure that we touch all that for each student so they get their optimum learning.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, what do you think are the top three issues?
Yeah, similar to what Patrick had to say. First is school funding, right? A stat that I've learned and that I still find kind of incredible is that sixty-three percent of households in our district do not have a child in the schools. So, you know, I talk to my son all the time, and I want our children to know that. It's a choice for people to support this district, right? And it's a sacrifice for people to support this district. So, as it comes to school funding, like Deb mentioned, you know, the funding model in Ohio, you know, we need to keep pushing on that. So, you know, with, if funds are taken away from our public schools, right? That's going to place an extra burden onto taxpayers who are already burdened and who are already giving so much to our schools. We do a great job with fiscal responsibility. Our treasurer is incredible. You know, the last levy passed in twenty sixteen, we stressed to seven years. So, we're fiscally responsible, but it wouldn't be right for an extra burden to be placed onto taxpayers. Secondly, is now that it's an issue, because our district is in a relatively great place. We've made a lot of strides in just these past eighteen months, but it's just continuing to move forward. I was at a PTA council meeting just this past week. Mr. Huhn, the Director of Curriculum, was there, and he, you know, just was focused on just making incremental improvements, whether it's closing gaps for, you know, kids who might be struggling or pushing our gifted and high-achieving students, you know, further. We have the fifteenth-rate district in the state of Ohio. How can we get better? Third is, we see a lot of districts struggling with teacher retention, right? Our surrounding communities, so we have to do what we can to maintain the talent that we have and to make, to continue this being a destination for teachers.
Thank you very much. The third question, we'll start with Ms. Callahan. How would you support and advocate for students with learning disabilities, learning differences?
There's a lot of things in place already for that, and I would say that we need to continue to make sure we're following that. Kids with learning disabilities, there's a lot of programs for them, and we need to plug into that and make sure we're doing everything for that students. Like I said a minute ago about everybody learns differently. And so, I think that those students that have these issues need to make sure that we're following their plan and doing what they need to be successful, because they can be successful. There's a lot of things in place in each building and within the school system and also with federal and state. So, we just have to be sure we're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman?
Yeah. Deb touched on the point of safety just a moment ago. And to her point, you know, safety isn't just about, you know, physically being safe, right? It's about a student's, you know, well-being, right? The student feeling empowered and confident. So, for students who have learning differences, those students need to feel safe, right? They need to feel like, you know, like they're a part of their community. For, you know, those students and students who want to need extra supports, we need to identify those issues clearly, right? We need to make sure that we have supports in place to intervene, to close gaps with their peers. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat what you've already heard. I do think that the five-year plan that the district has put together does address this in the personalization of their learning experience, in part, making sure that every student has access to the experience and the resources they need to achieve in the way that they can achieve. I don't think I can answer specific questions about any. I don't think it would be responsible to answer specific questions about any particular learning challenge or difference, except to say that I think our district already is one that strives towards this. And I think with the five-year plan, we're going to continue that. We're going to give our teachers resources, the early intervention, the early... I can't find the word I'm looking for, but it's the early detection. That's not it. That's a terrible word. Strike that word from the video. Edit the video. No, kidding. Early intervention is important. What do kids need? What do children need? What do people need, and how do we give it to them? I think that putting this, implementing this five-year plan in the way we intend, giving Scott Prebles, the administration, the teachers, the tools they need is the way we're going to do this. Obviously, also advocating with the state for the funding and the resources and those organizations who support is always important as well.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Goodman, what are your thoughts on something we're reading about in the newspapers? The state legislature's recent moves to disband the elected Department of Education and replace it with a central government-controlled board?
Yeah. I was chatting with somebody outside. You know, House Book Thirty-Three, there was, there was a decision made on the appeal just yesterday. I have the decision printed out in my car. I haven't got to read it thoroughly just because I've been running around. Bay Village is still bringing yard signs and... Yeah, it's incredibly concerning, you know, to have a body that does not have a check on its powers. Isn't right to me. Doesn't seem to line with our values as a country or as a society. So, it is incredibly concerning. And, you know, again, that's why I appreciate, you know, in Bay Village, we have such an informed and engaged base of citizens. That goes into our students, right? We have highly educated students who are active and involved and aware of what's going on. They are our future voters. They're our future decision-makers. And ultimately, you know, we're going to be handing things over to them. So, yeah, it's concerning. I don't know what else, what else I can say about it at this point. But as a candidate or as a board member, I would, you know, certainly, you know, work for a formal resolution in opposition to to that measure, among others, that we'll maybe talk about.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher, what are your thoughts on the state legislature moving to disband the elected, the Ohio Department of Education?
Well, I'm of several lines on this. I echo some of Mr. Goodman's comments about concern of the lack of checks and balances. I will also admit to the crowd that I'm not an expert on the state legislature's role in this. I do respect the electoral process, and these are the people that the state of Ohio elected, and this is the choices they've made. The best way to deal with this would be to vote differently in the statewide elections than to put the legislature in place that can reverse this, if that's what we believe. As to how that affects Bay Village specifically, it's the role of the school board and the superintendent to implement what the state of Ohio requires of us, whether we like it or not, unfortunately. That I am a strong proponent of local sovereignty. And this is a situation where regardless of whether we have an elected school board or we have an appointed czar of schools, I would hope that they would continue to allow local districts such as our own to conduct our school district in the way that we would like it, fits the values of our citizens and the voters here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Do you have some state comments on the state legislature's move to disband the elected Department of Education?
Yes. Can you point the microphone to her? Thank you. I'll get it by the end of the night. I one hundred percent agree that that's not a good idea. I don't like this idea at all. I want it to be, continue to be an elected thing, not an appointed one. When you start appointing, then you're doing party, and I don't like... I think school boards and the school systems are supposed to be nonpartisan. And when you start having a governor or someone else appointing a school system, a school board, then you're directing it to their party. Then they leave, then they have another, somebody else comes in, and they want a different board, and you're constantly revamping, and it's, there's no consistency then. And I think that's the problem with sometimes with, for the schools. We're always getting these changes midstream, and we don't know what to do because it comes down, and it's right away. Now, here's the change. Go ahead and do it. And you're kind of spending all your time doing that rather than educating and worrying about what is important for your students. you're kind of spending all your time doing that rather than educating and worrying about what is important for your students in your system. So for me, I don't think it's a good idea. I would hope that the board continues to fight that or send their concerns to the state and let them know that this is not something that we're for. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm standing with Mr. Mosher. How do you feel about a school system restricting student access to particular books?
Let me start by saying that that's a little bit of a loaded question. The school district doesn't have a copy of every book ever published. This is not the responsibility of the local library, the school system to to carry every book that anybody, whatever desire. I have faith in our school board and our administrators and our teachers that this district will carry the books necessary and appropriate for the age groups and students and that we invite the comment of the citizenry when we when those decisions are made. Restricting of books, when you say it out of context, sounds terrible, but the reality is there's plenty of books that I think we could all agree I could bring in here are inappropriate for different ages and different groups, or just aren't conducive to learning. I'm not trying to to point out any particular books that are currently in the news. If there are books that a parent would like their student to read, they are certainly welcome to acquire those books themselves. To ask any district to provide to every student, any book that they want without question is not ever really the issue. I have faith in our teachers and our administrators in this district that the access to reading materials for our children is those decisions are being made the right way.
Ms. Callahan, how do you feel about a school system restricting student access?
Things like banning books is really personal. What I might think is a bad book, you might think is a fine book. So to me, it should be parental choice. If your teacher is really reading a book with the students that you feel is not appropriate, you have every right to say, I don't want my child to read that book. And they can read a different book or be removed during that time. When I was teaching, I know that was a million years ago, but it we did it all the time. It wasn't some big deal. It was a parent said, I don't like that book. Okay, fine. There was no forcing of it. There was no arguing about it. And there certainly wasn't a banning of it. So I think to me, that's how it should be. You you have these books, the adults that made the choices to bring these books in, whether it's the teachers or the people from Central Office or however they're brought, they're not bringing books in. Have had, they've read them, they've looked at them, they've decided this is appropriate for this grade. And again, it's personal, it's objective. And so you you need to trust that. And if you don't like it, you have every right to stop it from your child reading. That's.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Yeah. I think, you know, I I'm listening to, you know, my peers up here and I'm just kind of looking around. In the setting, we're in a library, we're surrounded by books. I actually took a moment before the forum and before the public arrived to to walk around the perimeter here and to to seek out any books that would be challenging. I know over here we have a book on Hitler Youth, that's on the wall, one, two, three, four columns in. And so I know that even in this setting, there are books that are going to challenge our children and to challenge viewpoints. We're surrounded by them literally. And that's really the point of a library. I know here in Bay Village, like the other candidates have said, I trust our staff, our educators, their professionals in their fields, they're educated, highly educated, but you know, many master's degrees. So I would entrust and empower them to be, you know, selecting age appropriate materials, certainly. But also material that if the student wants to be challenged, that they have access to. I think it's incredibly important. I've learned, you know, just just talking to people and being able to empathize with others and seeing other people's viewpoints is, you know, is what makes our community special. It's what makes our country special.
Thank you. Starting with Ms. Callahan, this is a question about school vouchers. There's a proposed expansion of school vouchers in the state of Ohio. How would you be? How would you see this affecting Bay Village schools?
Obviously, this is a very controversial topic. Vouchers, while they have a place, I don't think they have a place in substituting our money for voucher money. And I think the public schools are losing money all the time because for vouchers. I I think fair funding is is great and it should it should have happened, but not at the expense of the public schools. And right now, the money that is allocated for vouchers is almost three times the amount that we get per student in the public schools. That to me seems unfair. We're not equal. So there has to be a way to work that out. If we're going to continue to do vouchers, then we have to be able to say it's fair across the board. Along with vouchers, then you have. It was going somewhere with this.
I think it'll catch up with you with another question. Mr. Goodman, what's your thoughts on proposed expansion of school vouchers within Bay Village?
Yeah, you know, to 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 Deb's point and going back to fair funding and talking about our taxpayer dollars and resources and how they're utilized. You know, when our when our tax dollars are shifted to a a private or charter school, you know, those schools don't have the same mechanisms in place as our public schools. There's less oversight on how the funds are used. There may be restrictions to, you know, students rule, you could say no to certain students who are enrolled. Whereas, you know, our public schools provide a benefit for all children and we have access and we provide access to high quality education for all children. We can talk about the constitutionality of it. In the state of Ohio, we've we've ruled you know, the funding model as being unconstitutional already. And, you know, personally, you know, I am in opposition to my tax dollars funding, you know, private charter schools. We've seen scandals. Odella, which is the Ohio, some election, something has already been embroiled with with scandal and funds, you know, not being used appropriately. Yeah, I'm and I I'm in opposition to it. Our our public tax dollars should be supporting our public schools and giving, you know, each each child's access to a high quality education.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher, what are your thoughts on a proposed expansion of school vouchers?
There there are there are several points to make on this. Let me start by saying from a purely administrative point of view in Bay Village, if it happens, we will deal with it. Whether we like it or not, I think that's important to state here. We're talking to voters of Bay Village. As I think I said previously, there are many laws I don't like. I have to follow them. There are things that we don't like that we have to do. We have to adjust. I hope we don't have to adjust further. Those who be familiar with the funding model, Bay Village frankly pays quite a bit more into this model than it gets back out from the state. We get very little state money back. And part of that's the literally the generosity of this bedroom community of ours where we are blessed with people who vote for levies, who keep nice properties, move here for our schools and then have a state funding model that punishes us for it. The idea of vouchers then is one of those great ideas on paper that doesn't seem to quite work the way it's supposed to work. It's supposed to motivate substandard school districts to get better, to keep their money. And it doesn't seem to quite do that. I'm conflicted about vouchers because I struggle with the idea that here we have to provide an education and opportunity for every child in this community if they choose to live here and attend our schools. However, other schools get to kick kids out, not accept them. And I struggle with them getting state money when they don't have to do the things for the children that we I was gonna say that we have to do, but honestly, that we want to do. We want to do those things for those children. So, yeah, this is a system that still needs to be fixed some more.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Goodman, we have a question from a retired teacher and that says in the focus of their teaching, they saw things come and go in terms of what were priorities. And they want to know they expected when they were teaching that students would learn analysis and be able to deal with new and controversial issues rather than be indoctrinated and manipulated by whatever was invoked. I'm not sure exactly what that refers to, but as a member of the Board of Education, what will you insist be the main focus of education for students in the Bay Village system? Mr. Goodman?
Gotcha. I'm trying to wrap my head around the question. You know, our we do a great job of putting out highly educated kids. I was talking to somebody earlier today and we were chatting about the diversity, you know, in our in our district and the diversity of of students, right? We have a diverse group of students. If if you were at the homecoming parade, right? And you saw the floats come down, right? We saw the theater club athletics, you know, football, golf, the the saga kids, theater. Right? Every every student in our district is different, right? We're all individuals, right? And each student should, you know, be challenged to reach their full potential, you know, in whatever that is, right? They get to define it. They get to define it. They want to go into into the trains, you know, when they graduate or go into university. You know, or not, they get to decide if they want to be an artist when they when they graduate. Yeah, I mean, so I I guess the easier the easy answer to that is that each student, you know, should should be should be pushed and challenged to reach their full potential. Of course, they should have a well rounded, you know, educational foundation, you know, math, reading, science, no matter. But we do, and I'm I'm so happy that we, you know, we can provide those extras, like we use it. Our music program is incredible. I love the band kids, right? The band kids provide such, I use the term, they're they're great near peer, near peer role models to my child. And they add a special something to our district. Theater is add something special. It takes all of us as a community and all of our students to make this community what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
I was, I I'm gonna beg you not to repeat the question. I was actually gonna ask you to repeat the question and tell you I was kidding, but that was a very long question and I don't mean to to diminish whoever asked it. It's an important question, but it's it's there's a deeper part of this. One of the things somebody in their early thirties like me notices is we don't like change. Change is difficult. I look at my kids go through school and they learn things differently than I did. They learn long division different than I did. And I thought, what's wrong with the teachers today? It's easy to see things that you don't like and interpret them as indoctrination. We don't teach the way we taught in nineteen fifty. That's a good thing. We teach a lot of the same material we teach, but we don't teach it the same way. I remember doing phonics. I don't even know if they call it phonics anymore. See, I just gave my age away. And I mentioned the schwa-y to somebody and they looked at me like I was insane. I don't think my kids know what a schwa is. And I thought, well, that's weird. That's fundamental to learning. But this is the thing, you're right, the state is going to come in, they're going to change. And what's invoked today will not be invoked tomorrow. That is absolutely correct. Whether we like it or not, and there are some things invoked that some people don't like and some think like them a lot. Again, I'm gonna come back to this. We have to trust in our administration, our teachers, our staff that they are doing what they can. We have things that are pushed upon us by the state, by the media, by whatever group, good, bad, indifferent. And we have to work through it and ensure that our kids get the best education we can give them. And I think we do that. And we're going to continue to do that. If there's something anyone in this room doesn't like that they think is in vogue, let us know. Let me know. The important thing is we talk and we listen and we deal with it. No one is trying to indoctrinate. And if you think that's what's happening, please let us know. Because we're here to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan, what do you see as the main focus of education?
She didn't answer this question.
Pardon me? I didn't answer this question. Um, well, I was trying to rephrase it. Be the main focus of education. Well, I think we've we've got to look at what's been, what we're doing and where we're going. Things that we've done a long time ago are certainly important and yet and still very valid. And then other things are no good anymore. And so you kind of have to always be willing to adapt and adjust. And one thing that I really found out was the book that if you didn't, I'm gonna do a commercial now, Scott, for the strategic plan, because in there, it's a five year plan and it addresses these kinds of things. Under learning, it says all students learn in their own way and we're going to try and address that and focus on helping them. So if it's an old method, a new method, a method we don't even know about yet, then that's what we're going to do. And I think that's how you you fit, you work on education individually for each student. There's always going to be things that, you know, people say, when I was in school, this was how I learned it. Why aren't they doing that now? Things change. Everything changes. We didn't, you know, when you were, when I was young, we barely had a VCR. That was a new thing. No one wants that anymore. So that moved on. But there are things that from many years ago that we still use that people like because it works. And that's that's how I look at it. I think you need to look at what's working and use it and what's not working, move on.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Mosher, here's a question. How would you support the district's teachers?
Well, that's an easy answer. We give them the tools and the resources that need to be successful. At least we continue to do that. The the Bay teachers, we are so lucky. We have an outstanding group of of teaching professionals here. I threw my children through school and through my wife, I've had the opportunity to meet literally probably hundreds of them. They need our support. They need our understanding. They're put under tremendous pressure. This budget cuts always looming, class sizes, facilities in need of repair. And all the while, every parent is screaming their kid needs more attention. My kid doesn't get what they need. We have phenomenal administration. And we're gonna, that's just gonna keep going. That's the thing. I feel like I'm repeating myself, but we need to continue to give the teachers the tools they need to be successful and not have cameras in the classrooms to spy on them to see if they teach exactly the way we want. Honestly, personal opinions and and personal viewpoints, I had a lot of teachers in school and they weren't all the same. They weren't all robots. I didn't expect them to be. Some are liberal, some are conservative, some are, I don't know what they are, but they're something. We need to give them the space to be what they are. And if that's going to influence at times a viewpoint of a class, that's good for the kids. It's good for the families. It's good to be confronted with viewpoints you don't like. That's what makes life fun. Living in an echo chamber where everybody thinks what you think and says what you say is boring. And Bay Village is not boring.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. How would you support the district's teachers?
I think the district does a great job of supporting the teachers. They give them freedom to do what they think is best. They are the experts in the classroom. They care a lot. They are checking things all the time, looking for better ways to do things. They aren't waiting for someone to say, do this. This is how you go in your classroom and do this. They they know what they're doing and you have to give them that freedom. I suppose if they make a mistake or you don't, something happens, then you can reel it in. But for the most part, in the forty years I've been here, I think. Reel it in. But for the most part, in the forty years I've been here, I think that's what makes Bay Village Schools wonderful. Our teachers are given the freedom. To teach and do what they think is best. And that's what I support. I think that's what makes. The system work so well. And I, you know, worked in another system and I know other systems. And sometimes they like to have a little handle on everything, but I think here, teachers are given the freedom to do what they think is best and it works.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Yeah, um, I'll have similar thoughts, um, as, as my peers up here. Um. We have incredible teachers, right? The results speak for themselves, right? Best teachers in the Northeast Ohio region, um. Our, our teachers are experts. They are professionals in their field. They know more about education than I possibly ever knew, um. You know, specifically, you know, teachers have limited resources, right? They have limited time, um. To, to, to the credit of, of, um, both my co-candidates, um. Yeah, they, they, whatever, whatever I can do as a board member to. Free up the resources, to provide additional resources, to provide additional supports to our teachers, to. Just give them a feeling of, you know, they have, they have somebody, um, you know, supported behind them is. But I, our teachers are incredible, um. Yeah, again, the results speak for themselves. I can't scan anyone and what's already done.
Thank you. Um, there's some buzzwords out in the field regarding many different areas of our lives. And starting with Ms. Callahan, someone has written a question. What actions do you support or oppose regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion in education?
I would support equity in, in schools. Along with that, I would support equality as well. I think equity is where students are learning. But might need to learn differently in order to reach that same outcome. That's what makes them equal. After they've, you, you can't just push things out there and say, this is how we're gonna do it and you're all gonna be the same. To get to that point might be a different way to do it. And that would be the diversity part. Did you say diversity, right? Yes, um, and I would, I would say that that is also something we need to look at because. Every kid is different as well and they need to be safe and feel safe. They need to be able to go to school and know that they can learn without problem. I think empathy is a thing we have to work on a little bit more with students. They have to understand. Other students and everybody's different, but they can all get along. They can be equal in that respect. They're all here to learn. Those are my feelings about them.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, do you have some um, actions to support or oppose diversity, equity, and inclusion within education?
Yeah, um, so in, um, you know, I mentioned, I, I work at Case Master Reserve University, um, so I, I serve on the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Um, committee, um, in my department, um, at work, um. You know, again, to my point earlier, we have a diverse group of students, right? When a student walks into that door, um, you know, and however they walk into that door, they're gonna be supported, right? They're. Now, these are our children, right? It's our goal to provide each and every one of our children with a high-quality education, um. The, you know, just outside of the, the doors here, um, in the library, uh, there's a mural on the wall. And the mural, and all around the campus is one Rocket Nation, right? It's not some Rocket Nation, right? It's one Rocket Nation, um. So each, you know, every, again, every single one of our students is, is going to be supported. No, every student is gonna have access to a high-quality education in this district. Every student is gonna feel like they belong in this, in this district, um. Inclusivity is a value of our community. Um, I think that we've shown that in, in recent years, um. You know, again, it, it takes all of us to make this thing work, right? And so. Having this diverse population is, is a benefit. Having kids with a diverse. Diverse backgrounds, right? Diverse viewpoints is, is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
I've got the chance to listen to my, my fellow candidates. This is an interesting question to a person like me who gets very hung up on semantics. One of the, one of the things about this is, 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 I don't wanna say it's a society. I don't like that expression, but we're. We're stuck right now in a culture where we, we hook onto words, good and bad. And we debate the merits of a word rather than an idea. There's nothing wrong with the ideas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. They're great ideas. I have a, for a Bay Village person, I have an odd perspective, oddly being married to a personal color, which doesn't make me special or not. But it does give me a different approach to things and a different vision as to what all of this means at times. I, I went to India with my wife and her father took us to. A village where I'm pretty sure they never saw anybody as tall or as white as I am. And I never felt more alone in my entire life. But I knew I was with a group of people that, which was my in-laws that were gonna take care of me and I didn't worry about it, but man, it gave me a perspective about things. The other thing, and I'm, I'm always been strange about this. I believe in the power of one. When we talk about diversity, I really struggle when it's about demographics rather than being about individual people. We are, every one of us in this group, a minority of one. No one knows what goes on in your brain except you. And we all have our own way of thinking about things, good and bad, and we need to start accepting people as individuals. Stop putting people into demographics and think we're gonna manage culture through demographics. Doesn't work. I don't think we do that here in Bay Village. I think we look at the individuals and we try to make them successful on an individual level. And we do that in an inclusive way. And if that's called equity and diversity, great. If it isn't, I'm not sure I care what word it's called, but I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Um, here's a question. Somebody's really up to date with what's going on in the new, uh, the state legislature. Uh, begin with Mr. Goodman. Can the candidates say what they think of House Bill six one six? And House Bill six one six prohibits and restricts how race, racism, sexual orientation are acknowledged, taught, and discussed. It stalled in committee, but given the way the state House works, things could change. How would you think the school system would respond to it? Mr. Goodman?
Could I ask you to repeat?
House Bill six one six? Sure. Prohibits and restricts. How race, racism, sexual orientation are acknowledged, taught, and discussed. It's a big mouthful.
Yeah, yeah, um. We should be teaching, uh, facts-based, correct, right? In history, right? We should be teaching accurate. Factual history, um, as a public school, um. You know, there was a mention of, of indoctrination earlier, um. Altering, altering history, right? And in altering events that happened and in putting a spin on it, um, is indoctrination. Right? Um, we should be teaching, you know, history, uh, race, racism, uh. As, as it happened, right? We should, we should be discussing the difficult. Items, you know, of, of our past, the difficult, uh, topics now, right? Um. It's the only way that we can move forward. Um. The discourse is, is incredibly important, right? We need to talk to each other. We need to face these, these challenging topics head on, um. I, I had an interesting conversation with my parents recently, um, about Ruby Bridges, right? Um, the, the, mostly everybody here is, is. Gonna be familiar with Ruby Bridges and, and desegregation in our, uh, you know, in our country, um. If you look at, you know, the pictures of Ruby Bridges and you look at the folks. Standing behind Ruby Bridges, right? A little, I don't know, seven, eight, nine-year-old girl, um. Take a look, take a look at their faces, um. Take a look at what signs, you know, people are holding, um. It's, it's something that we should talk about so that we don't do it again, right? We have a sign over here that talks about the hallocks and says, never again.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Um, do you have any thoughts about House Bill six one six now in committee?
Um, I'm not sure I know enough about House Bill six one six to, to give an informed opinion on it. I will repeat something I said earlier. I don't always like the legislature. If they pass it and it's something that the schools have to do, we will work with our administration. To implement it in as responsible manners as we can. That being said, I, I will have to agree with, with Mr. Goodman on this. There are things we should be afraid to talk about. Uh, I will just append a little addendum to that. They should be talked about in the appropriate classroom. Uh, I completely agree about there is a time and a place and a absolute necessity. To discuss race, the history of race in the U.S. and its impact on the present day. I don't happen to think that that's math class. Uh, it doesn't mean I'm in favor of a bill that would ban that discussion. It means, again, as I think I have said repeatedly, that I have faith in our administration, our teachers, in our curriculum. That we have a responsible district that teaches the. Things it needs to teach in the classes where they need to be taught. If the state of Ohio disagrees, I will say what I said before, we need to vote the bums out. I think is the old expression. And we need to change the legislature and put laws in place that we favor.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Yes, and currently in committee in Columbus is a bill, six one six, that prohibits and restricts. How race, racism, sexual orientation are acknowledged, taught, and discussed.
Did a lot of research this past few weeks. And there are so many bills in Congress, in, in the House in Columbus. You, you could, your mind just gets spun reading them. This is what I didn't see, so. Just listening to the title of it, it sounds like another one and another one and another one. They seem to come, be keep picking these bills up. And just changing the wording a little bit. And let's put this one and I'm gonna put my name on this one. And they don't really get anywhere with them. The idea of restricting teaching of race and. Things that have been taught that are part of our culture is not something you would want for your students. You want them to be diverse. You want them to know. History. You can never go forward if you don't know what happened. And so that really bothered me, this particular bill, and I'm gonna, I wanna go home because it hurts me now. But I miss that one. But I don't see how that could even, it's, it's a, to me, that's a personal thing that somebody has a vendetta. Kind of, I want this bill, I wanna make this comported and. Make it difficult for people to teach. So we don't like it.
Thank you. This is our last question before the closing statements. Starting with Mr. Mosher. What is your greatest fear for the Bay Village schools?
My greatest fear, well, I'm not sure there's one. Uh, there's, it's an issue we didn't talk about tonight. I'm not sure I've called it a fear. We have a facilities audit coming up. And we may not like what that facilities audit has to tell us about some of our facilities. And my fear is we may, I, I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth. There is a. Non-zero probability that we're gonna have to go back to the voters of this great city. And ask them for funds to upgrade one or more of the facilities here. If, if that constitutes fear, then that's what I'm afraid of. Um, the only other thing that I would fear, and I know you asked for one, but I do have a little more time. Is that we don't continue to have the support of the voters here because without the support of the voters, we can't do the things. We wanna be able to do, whether it's funding now, as I said, we were lucky enough to have a levy. Passed last year. Those don't last forever. In fact, forever is very short in the land of levies. If we're fortunate, we'll get five or six years out of it. We're very fortunate, we'll get six years or seven years out of it. We will have to go back to the voters. We will have to ask them for more money. And my fear is that if we alienate the voters or if we turn them off. That they will not continue to support the schools. And I don't want any names of the communities around here where that's happened. But when it does, you get into a death spiral you can't get out of. And I know that's a doomsday, but we did ask for my biggest fear, so, and I gave you two. I cheated.
Thank you for being honest. Ms. Callahan, what's your greatest fear?
Well, I think, I think my greatest fear would be similar to that. Of course, it's, it's levies, it's money, it's, it's hurting the community, it's. Not being able to make it clear to people what we needed for. It's very misunderstood how money is allocated to the schools. And that's been like that forever. Um, and it's the one thing the public has control over. And so that's, that's a hard thing, but I think that's something that's been going on forever. So I don't think that's a big new. Uh, issue. To me, another, the biggest issue right now, I think, would be mental health of our students. I'm very concerned about that. I think between social media and the things that they are involved in. That they aren't able to process things like an adult would. And so we have. To work on mental health for our students. To me, that is something that, which I know is coming up in Bay. And that I hope we really get a handle on because that concerns me a lot. I'm really concerned and worried about that. And maybe because I have grandchildren and I look at them and think they're in the schools now. And I see what they do with their, you know, my, with their social media and their friends. And what bothers them. And it's different than it was ten years, twenty years, certainly thirty or forty years ago. So that's an issue to me. Thank you. Mr. Goodman, what is your greatest fear about the district?
Yeah, um, similar to, to Mr. Mosher's, um, statements, um. It's, you know, we have to, the district, right, and the community, we have to continue moving forward, right? Um, I, I just touched on the amount of time that, you know, our volunteer organizations and, and folks spend in support of this district. I, I may have taken this for granted once, but it's, it's incredibly hard to. Um, for one, create the success that our district has and that we all benefit from, um. But on the other hand, it's, it's also easy once things start to, to slip the other way. Um, we see it in surrounding communities, not immediately surrounding, but, but within our region. Um, where districts have, you know, maybe lost, you know, community engagements, um. Or they may have lost, you know, a little bit of trust with the district for one reason or the another. And then all of a sudden, things kinda start crumbling down and you're not able to fund schools. You start losing teachers, um, teacher retention becomes an issue and it's, it's a downward effect, um. To combat that, right? We have to keep getting better, right? We have to keep improving, right? We have to keep challenging our students. We have to. Uh, you know, keep hiring, um. You know, the, the best teachers and the best administrators that we can, um. We have to improve transparency and communication with the district. We have to improve community engagement, um. We, we just have to keep moving forward as a community. We have to continue to come together in support of. This district and in support of our incredible students, um.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I would like to thank these candidates before we even go to the closing for. Their thoughtful answers to the many questions that we asked here. It is no small, uh. Let know what question is gonna be coming at you and to formulate your answer. So I give them, um, a great deal of thanks. Starting with Mr. Mosher, we're going to have our closing statements. You have up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Uh, let me start by thanking the, again, the legal voters and all of you for coming tonight. Um, it is a Wednesday night and it's getting very close to my bedtime. A lot of what I was gonna say in my closing statement, I've already said. And if there's one thing I like to do is repeat myself. So here I go. Uh, this is an incredible community. I am passionate about the schools. I'm passionate about education, um. My wife and I, with our three kids, our goal with our three kids was to make sure that they got the educational experience that they needed. We did that. We knew we could do that here. I want to do that for every child. I want the district to be able to do that for every child. I wanna be a part of that five-year strategic plan. Can I promise you it's all gonna work perfectly? No, I wish I could. I wish I could make those kind of promises. But we're gonna try. We are gonna do the best we can. The people here of this city have. We are gonna do the best we can. The people here of this city have been very generous to the schools. And they deserve the best we can give them back, and we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it for these kids and for this community. And I wanna be a part of it. So, that's all I wanna say, and I thank you for your support, and I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan?
Thank you to the legal women voters for tonight. Um, to say, it's a little nerve-wracking is an understatement, but. I hope that you have felt through what I've said, my passion for education. I mean, I've been a student all my life, either in the, as a child, in the classroom, somehow I've been in education. When I started teaching, um, my second year or so, the principal did his little evaluation, and, you know, you go and sit down and you're nervous because this. They're, they're in charge and they're gonna tell you what you're doing right and wrong, and my principal said, you did a great job, you're doing great in the classroom. The con is that you're too passionate. And I have, that has stuck with me all my life, because I don't understand how you can be too passionate. And if I am too passionate, then I guess I'm not gonna be a good board member, but I think that because I'm so passionate, that would make me a good. Board member. I love this city, I love this school system, I love education, and I love. To help students, and that is my goal, to make this the best, and it's already been the best, so it's to keep it the best. And so that's why I would like to be on the board. I think I have a lot to offer that way, and I think I. Take that passion and show that it makes a difference. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, yeah, once again, thank you, um, to the legal women voters for hosting this forum, and, and truly thank you for all of the work that you do. Um, thank you again to the community. Um, thank you to, to Patrick and Deb. We have three, I think, really great candidates, everybody is running for the right reasons. I feel very fortunate to be running now, uh, at this time, right? As a district, we've checked awful lot of boxes in these past eighteen months, right? Passed the levy last year, twenty twenty-two, um, I was happy to serve on the Citizens for Bay Village Levy Committee to, to help, um, to make that successful. We hired a superintendent, um, you know, who I, I think has been phenomenal and is gonna be here to lead the district for years to come. We've developed and launched our five-year strategic, uh, strategic plan. With immense engagement, again, from the community. Um, thank you all so much for, again, being engaged, being formed, being active. Again, I, I've said it a number of times, we have to keep moving forward as a district, right? We have to keep coming together as a community. We have such an incredible asset in this school district. Um, it is a gem, it's not just in our region, in the state. Um, Mr. Prebles likes to use the term, uh, a lighthouse district, right, because other districts look up to us, right? I'm incredibly proud of that. We've talked about funding, right? We've talked about how much of a burden, uh, we know we have, we have high taxes, we know that. We don't have the benefit of tax revenue from industry, and during the levy committee, um. I realized that, you know, this, this district and this incredible asset that we have, right, it's on us. But it's because of us that we have this, right? It's because of the community's support, it's because of all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. As we close this meeting, I would like to thank all members of the audience for your varied, varied questions. They have made it an excellent night. I would like to remind you, if you want to vote by mail, the applications are in the back. If you wanna go down to town and vote, as I did today, you can go downtown to the Board of Elections. The election, you can vote in person in November, but voting is a special privilege for all of us. If you want to know more about their candidates, you can go to the website, vote four one one. The candidates will be staying outside in the back near their literature. And would welcome any further questions that you may have of them. Thank you and good evening.